I think we have everybody here, so we will begin our town council special meeting Monday, August 10th, 2020. At this point, we will say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
I agree.
Turn the flag.
On the United States of America and to the Republic of Switzerland.
Under God.
Under God.
With liberty and justice for all.
Not gonna lie, we have in-person meetings.
Same here.
All right, we'll move on to number two. Are there any visitors on the call that would like to be recognized?
Yeah, it's John Allen here.
Hey, John, how are you guys doing and ladies, lady? Anyway, I'm here just because in support of the STEEP application, I think it's number nine on the agenda, the EDC has been working with Carl, trying to get you guys to maybe move ahead and pony up some municipal money for this. It's very important. We kind of ID'd a facade improvement along Main Street. I don't know if Phil Sengel's on now, but Phil's been the EDC guy, a lot of legwork. There's a lot of interest in it from some of our normally not so interested landowners and landlords to get this thing started. So that's why we're here. And also, if Phil is on, if there's any questions you want to ask when you get to that point of the agenda, we'll be here. Great. Thank you very much, John.
Thank you, John.
Any other visitors like to be recognized?
Okay.
Phil Sengel, I'm here.
Say again?
Yeah, Phil Sengel, I'm here. I just got it turned down.
Okay, thank you, Phil.
And I was also saying David Malillo from Human Services. We have some items on the agenda.
Thank you, David. Anybody else?
Chris, it's Todd Hadrack, if I can say something.
Absolutely.
I just wanted to address the council. We've gotten a lot of thanks from everybody, which we've had a rough week, last week. I just want people to remember when budget season comes around, especially like last year, my chipper got cut. Right now, I'd really like to have that new chipper. I'm on life support with the one I got. So I just want to just keep that in people's minds, that we're not doing it because we think we need new toys. We're doing it because we want to serve the town as best we can.
Thank you, Todd. Anyone else? Okay, and that time, we're going to move on to number three, which is the approval of the minutes for the July 15th, 2020 meeting. Is there a motion to approve? So moved. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Jim.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Thank you. Moving on to item number four, which is appointments and reappointments. So everybody's gotten the information for the first, which is Michelle Bailey, which is who is a Democrat for the Human Service Advisory Board for a term until 6:30, 2021. Is there a motion to approve, Michelle?
I'll make that motion, Tim.
A second?
I'll second it, Dennis.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Wait, Chris, I do have a discussion point. I'm sorry. I'm looking at the membership of the board. I understand that she's a good candidate for this. I'm not disputing that. But is she, whose place is she taking? Does anybody recall?
Is, uh, let's see.
I mean, because this is an appointed position, right? It could have been either, it could have been any party, right? It could have been Republican or undesignedated or something like that. And this was publicized in the, in a fashion to let people know the vacancy existed?
Yep.
Okay, all right, then. I'm done.
I believe she took all the seat, Kabor.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah. Your question, Carol. Uh, there's five members on that board. There's four, the only vacant.
There's six.
Democrat to 2021.
There are six, it's a seven-person board and there are six members right now. But anyway, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna argue the point. If.
No, you're right. You're right.
If the party, if both parties were aware that the vacancies existed and this is what the, who came up, then I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
Yeah, um, she would be the third Democrat.
Yep.
There's two Republicans and two U's.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
But it doesn't violate the minority representation statute, correct? Correct. Any other discussion? At this point, David, we have a motion on the table, so we gotta go through and just either approve or deny the motion at this point. Any other discussion? All in favor of appointing Michelle Bailey?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Thank you very much. All right. Move on to the Sustainability Committee membership. So at this point, we have six names to put forth. I know the membership on the charge had listed seven members. There was recently a member that had put forth his name and that decided that he was no longer, we could no longer serve in that capacity on that committee. So at this point, we have six. At this point, I suggest we move forward so that at least we can start this committee moving forward and they can start having their meetings. And then obviously knowing that there, there is another opening for another individual on this committee. At this point, the six names are Tanya Abatello, Carrie Allen, Catherine Ziminski, Erin Lindsay, Jim Smith, and Justin Teague. So at this point, we have a motion to approve this list of seven members?
Can you? It's Christine Gepiel. Can you let us know the membership, the party affiliations for each?
Tanya Abatello, Green, Carrie Allen, Democrat, Catherine Ziminski, Democrat, Erin Lindsay is unaffiliated, Jim Smith is a Republican, and Justin Teague is a Red, Green Party.
Okay. My name was also submitted by the Democrats as well.
Yep. And it was my feeling that as an advisory committee that reports back to the council, that council members shouldn't be on this committee. Should be a committee of people outside of the council, let them deal with the charge that they've been presented and come back to the council with their comments. Putting a council member on an advisory committee that has a specific charge, you have a council member on there, you know, if a council member is speaking in support of or in denial of something, it could cause some issues.
It would have been helpful if you had communicated that back to the Chair of the Democratic Party and to myself in advance. I think I have unique experience with the Sustainability Committee and have advised them thus far, which Eric Bergman can certainly attest to and Tanya Abatello can attest to, that I have guided them since I have transitioned from the town manager.
Mr. Chair, would the current, would this preclude Christine from making, if she was asked for advice, could Christine make some suggestions, having been the former first select person? As again, the advisory committee is set up with their membership. Their charge, based upon the charge that we presented to them, is to report, report back to the council and at that point, we can have the interaction with the committee. Okay. And I do know that Kath- Kathleen Z. Ziminski, she's unaffiliated, I believe. Oh, okay. I think so. Anyone else? If we're not talking, I'm gonna go on mute. We need everybody to go on mute if they're not talking. Thank you. Any other discussion? So at this point, looking for a motion to approve the six names put forth for the advisory.
Second? I'll make that motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Okay, thank you very much. Moving on now, we'll go to the. Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, one last thing. Since the interns, their, their, their assignment is soon to expire, will the Sustainability Committee get right to work? Because I do think we missed a couple of weeks with the interns in the last few weeks. I mean, now that the committee has been set in place, memberships in place, they can move forward with setting up a meeting. Okay, and they'll be notified that they've been appointed from their area? Yep. That'd be correct. Yep. All right, now we're gonna move on to the Senior Center Advisory Committee Charge. Everybody has received a copy of the draft that Carl had put forth for Senior Center Advisory Committee. I will say that there was an article in the paper, there have been some people that were, that have reached out and contacted me about this committee. And actually, an individual had put forth maybe renaming this committee. So I want to throw this out to, to a Senior Resources Advisory Committee, as opposed to a Senior Center Advisory Committee, which allows it and gives it, I guess, a broader base of, you know, essentially what this committee is doing and what their charge is as far as what we're looking for going forward and not sort of just directing it to a, a senior center, but getting information so that, you know, we can talk about what this town already has to offer to our seniors, which I believe is a lot, and there is a lot available. And I think it would be beneficial, you know, for us to work through the items on this charge. And I think the biggest thing is, is, you know, how do we get the message on this senior advisory committee, or whatever they may be, out to the public? That seems to be the biggest thing about what the town does have to offer. So those were just two comments, or a comment that I'd received on this. So at this point, we have any other discussion about this on the draft that everybody's received?
I think that makes a lot of sense, looking at the entire project rather than just a center advisory committee. I think that makes a lot of sense.
And Mr. Chairman, it looks as though we can expect a pretty comprehensive report in mid-December. Is that correct? Yep. Okay. And well, maybe next meeting, we'll consider a list of names to get these guys going? Yep. Next meeting, we'll put together the list of names. Great, thank you.
So, so where are the name, where are the nominees coming from?
I think the public. Again, same thing. It's an advisory committee, you know, as far as the people that we bring into this, with people that maybe are serving on certain departments within our town, so that they can speak to what the town is offering. There have been some people from Human Services that have contacted and reached out of their interest in it, you know, somebody that's involved with the library, somebody involved in certain kind of boards and commissions that are involved in town, so that we can speak to the fact of what we do currently have to offer, you know? So if there's things that maybe people don't know about, then it becomes, how do we get that message to them? So again, as an advisory committee, that would be my thinking.
So how many names are you looking, I mean, are we gonna determine tonight how many people you would want on the, we would want on the committee membership? Okay, now if we have names in mind, can, would we forward them on to someone? I mean, I have a couple of names in mind of people that I would like to see. Would I be able to submit those to anybody for consideration?
I mean, I would probably have the people and speak to them to gauge their interest in the committee. And if they feel that they're interested in the committee, they can put their names forth to Mary or through an application maybe on, on our website.
Okay. And, okay, and then do we get to vet these people or to see their, okay, all right?
Yep. Anyone else? So again, if everybody's good with the change of the name of the committee to Senior Resource Advisory Committee, we can have Carl update that. And then again, just on membership numbers, what's the thinking on how many people should be on this? My thinking is five is a good number, so that we kind of limit the scope.
Does it have to be an odd number for any reason? Because, you know, there are months when people don't come to meetings. I'd rather, I'd prefer to have at least one more person on that committee. Would have a good discussion if there were only five people there versus a full six members arriving. I'd like to see six.
Six. Anybody else? Tim?
Yeah, Tim, I agree with Carol.
Six?
Yeah, I agree with six.
Anybody else? Okay. Then I guess at this point, we can make a motion to approve the charge put forth as a Senior Resource Advisory Committee and then update, or including the membership number of six. So have a motion for that?
I'll make that motion, Tim.
A second?
I'll second, Dennis.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Thank you. All right. Next on the board is number six, which is the Clinton Human Service Advisory Board Updated Bylaws. Erin Godet recently became the chairperson. David's on the call as well, so probably if there's any questions, we can hear from him. But Erin Godet, who is the newly appointed chairman, and her group have gone through the bylaws and wanted to do an update on these bylaws, you know, membership rules, just kind of revisiting the bylaws to make sure that everything is kind of up to date and current with anything that's town-related. So at this point, everybody has that updated draft that they presented to us. And at this point, it would be a motion that would be needed by the town council that ratifies the updated bylaws for the Clinton Human Service Advisory Board, as recommended by the Human Service Advisory Board.
Can we get a report back from them on the reasons for the specific changes and their feelings towards why they made those changes?
I would assume, I mean, I guess David's on the call, could probably have some questions for him.
Erin, do you want to take this one?
Is Erin on the call?
I see her name up there, not her picture. But maybe she's, she's not there right now. I think it was basically just an infusion of new board members and people wanted to check and make sure that what they were doing was in accordance with bylaws. They found a few things that were outdated there that they had to bring up to snuff. And then they also saw some ambiguities in there that they wanted to clarify. So the, the direction, I think, came from an energetic bunch of new board members, just trying to make sure that they were complying and then realizing, we have to change these because a few things had changed over the years.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Dennis here.
Yep.
I read over it, and I have just one little question about that preamble. In preamble, it says, pursuant to the Clinton Town Charter, December 12, Clinton Human Services is composed of Partners in Community, Social Services, and Youth and Family Services. I have a copy of that charter, and I don't see anything in there about the Partners in Community being in our charter. So I question, why is that added in the preamble?
Okay.
David?
I do not know the answer to that.
I think, is Erin on the call now? Her name's there?
Erin, you there? Yeah. Well, the fact that we do consist of those three parts is there. And what you're saying is, that's not in the charter that we have three parts. It just mentions two.
That is correct. The charter presently says, and the charter of 212 also said, that that department would be made up of human, I mean, Social Services and Family, Youth, and Services. Um, so I, you just can't create a department and put them in the charter. So I'm, I'm just asking that if somebody would, uh, edit that a little bit and just take out that, uh, Partners in Community problem. I have no other problem with the, with the charge.
I'd be happy to bring it back to the board. It might have been something that was a carryover of a previous mistake, but, or it could have been done this time, but we'll, we'll straighten it out.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions? Comments? At this point, it's up to us whether you guys want to table it to the next meeting for them to come back with a comment on that? Would that make sense?
Or just drop, pick out of your.
I would, I would make that recommendation, Mr. Chairman. I would make that motion to table until the, the next meeting.
For clarification?
I'll second that.
Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Okay. So David, if they just, again, next meeting, we just get an update as to why that was in there, as it related to the December 12, 2012 town charter?
Understood.
Okay, now we're gonna move on to the two state grants for election. For election. Carl, do you want to speak for these grants?
Yeah. So the Secretary of State's Office has, is distributing certain amounts of monies on a formula basis to every town, either based on population or number of registered voters, in order to help offset some of the costs associated with COVID and the like that we're navigating through right now. So the charter does say that it requires town council approval to apply for it. This doesn't read as an application, it just reads as a push. But I thought we just go through the process of getting the councils to approve the fact that these dollars are gonna be flowing to us as part of the secure polls, grant application, and the election funds for safe polls.
Thank you. Is there a motion to move forward with this?
Well, can I ask a question? Or should I wait till after the, the vote, till the discussion part? I'll wait till the discussion part.
Yeah, let's get a motion.
Double.
Second? All right, discussion?
All right, I'm reading this, and it says, "These grants are designed to support the work of local election officials to secure their election systems from cybersecurity threats and to improve the accuracy of the election rolls they maintain." What is $1,000 gonna do to secure, for cybersecurity threats? What is this supposed to do? What is the function of $1,000? I mean, is this?
I disagree with you on the dollar amount. There have been folks from the National Guard that have been working with our IT group to take a look at our cybersecurity, make sure that we're doing everything we're supposed to be doing. Some of that is technology-related, some of it is policy-related. So we're going to be getting a cybersecurity audit, for lack of a better word, coming out of this process also. I'm not sure what those dollars will go to.
This has happened now, or this is before November, or, and this is to pay the National Guard, or, I mean, it just seems.
We're not paying the National Guard, and the National Guard audit is ongoing right now. So it's disconnected from tomorrow's primary.
All right, okay, gotcha.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstain? Thank you, Carol.
Crazy.
All right, moving on to item number eight, which is another grant application. Everybody has the documentation, and the suggested motion is that the town council, the town council of the town of Clinton hereby authorizes and directs the town manager to approve an application for local prevention council grant from the state of Connecticut. Do we have a motion? Yep, I'll do it. Eric, a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Does anybody have any questions on any of this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Thank you again. Now, the 2020 Connecticut Small Town Economic Assistance Program STEEP Grant Authorizing Resolution, authorizing local match for the grant. Again, everybody has it. John Allen did speak earlier about this. At this time, I'll read the resolution, and if you want to move forward, then we can make that motion at the time. The resolution is in support of a 2020 Connecticut Small Town Economic Assistance Program STEEP Grant, whereas the state of Connecticut will make competitive grant funding available to eligible communities under the 2020 Small Town Economic Assistance Program. And whereas the town of Clinton is an eligible community, and whereas the town of Clinton, of the town council of the town of Clinton desires to secure a grant in the amount of $128,205 from the 2020 Small Town Economic Assistance Program, now therefore be resolved that town manager Carl Kilduff be, and hereby is authorized and directed to accept on behalf of the town, the town of Clinton, a 2020 Connecticut STEEP grant in the amount of $128,205 for the Clinton Business Improvement Initiative. And further resolve the town manager Carl Kilduff is hereby authorized and directed to enter into and execute any and all agreements, contracts, documents necessary to obtain said 2020 STEEP grant with the state of Connecticut. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question? Let's get through this. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? Yeah, I just wanted, I know OPM extended the deadline to August 28th, and I don't want to sound greedy here, but are there other grants we should pursue, having now some extended time here?
This is a separate and distinct grant, so we're following the STEEP program. You have, they extended the deadline. There isn't necessarily a different pot of money we should be chasing for this type of project right now. There's nothing that precludes us from pursuing in dollars. So the project, the funding source, I'm online. You need to act on the resolution as written, or what OPM is looking for. The extension of the deadline has nothing to do with approval of the resolution. It really has more to do with the administrative process of submitting the grant. To recall, the last meeting presented to you what the STEEP program was going to be this year. The maximum award is $128,205. It seems to be, set the math of taking a full dollar amount and assuming everybody gets something. The need for a local match, so in this particular case, we're trying to figure out what is a match that's monetary and match that's non-monetary, so that we can represent leverage of the state's potential contribution in this particular project. So as we discussed last time, there seemed to be some interest in a facade program. So that's how I tried to couch this and position it. The EDC, I think you've heard from them already, and if you were their liaison, you know that they've brought this up at prior meetings. The EDC, I think you've heard from them, uh, already, and if you were their liaison, you know that they've brought this up at prior meetings. Trying to utilize some pre-existing work that had been done through CIRC and the consulting planner that constitutes some local match. Um, but the secondary item of looking for an exact appropriation, the state does want to see actual dollars, um, from the local level included. Any private sector funds where a business wants to add to what they could get through this program does not count as local match for purposes of this application. Uh, certainly helps spread the dollars, but it doesn't, uh, doesn't count for something for our own application.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Thank you.
So in terms of the funding, I do need a motion on that front. Um, so it's a capital project, so it would be looking at prior capital funds. Um, so there's potential funding in the public works under, um, town infrastructure or pulling something from a carryover that was just done recently under GIS. At this point, given.
I didn't hear that. Carl, could you repeat that, please?
Sure. I need a motion to provide the local match. That motion has to have dollars appropriated before the application goes in. Um, so I was looking for ten thousand dollars of capital funding to reprogram from GIS, uh, which was something that was approved as a carryover. There's twenty-three thousand was approved as a carryover. I was looking to take ten out of that and create a pot that would serve as a revolving fund to, uh, give us the means to have money in projects, but the money would work more as uh, providing upfront cash to the business owner to do their project. And then we would turn around and draw down reimbursement out of the state. The state is not going to give the money in advance. The money has to be reimbursed. So I need to have some kind of local funding capacity in order to, at a minimum, revolve money through so that I could keep drawing down dollars from the state.
Carl, can you just give us an update on the, um, that specific project, so GIS and the status of it then, um, why the funds are not needed?
So going into when we did the, uh, carryover, there were a few loose ends that we were trying to pin down uh, for what could be, uh, additionally used under GIS. Those loose ends are being nailed down as we speak and the dollar need isn't as great. Uh, so there's a, a weapons overlay that needs to be added. It seems to be the largest component of it. Uh, and that does, that is going to consume all of that money. So there's the means in order to pull it away, still allowed GIS to get done. A few pieces that need to get done and that provide funding for this particular project.
Carl, can you just summarize how much you're looking to put towards this at this point? I mean, I, I heard you say the ten thousand from GIS and, and how much more from infrastructure?
Infrastructure is the only other pot of money that seem to be flexible enough.
I understand that it's reimbursable, but that you're going to get it back when people repay the loans and so I'm just wondering for the figures tonight because I've not seen them.
The only thing would be ten thousand from the G, uh, GIS carryover.
That's the only thing?
That's the only, the only request I'm asking for, for appropriation.
Oh, okay. Alright, thank you. So what do you need now?
Emotion?
Make a motion?
I'll make a motion, whatever.
A second. Christine, appeal second.
Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, now we're going to move on to, uh, number ten, which is discuss creating a non-lapsing account for un- unexpendited Board of Education funds pursuant to Connecticut General Statute ten dash two four eight A. Carl, you're on.
Okay, so, uh, with that exciting sounding title, um, the state statute was modified to allow boards of education to have a, what's they're calling a non-lapsing account, would be kind of like a reserve or contingency for, uh, certain expenses and it's up to the town to decide what those expenses were. The theory behind it, when the state statute came through was that there would be less of a uh, desire on part of a board of education to spend out all of its money by the end of the fiscal year if they knew that they could hold something back. Uh, in Clinton, the, the history is that those dollars that are appropriated by the, uh, by the town are, are fully utilized. Uh, this particular year, we've got the unique circumstances of COVID, which left the board ahead with some excess funding left over. So the new auditors that we have suggested that the town take a look at it and at least have a conversation, uh, which is sort of the, the point of tonight's discussion. Uh, if the town council wanted to create such a pot, uh, how would those dollars be used and where would they go in the future? So some towns have taken advantage of this, uh, statu- statutory provision and created it to be used by the Board of Education for operating expenses. Others have made it specific to capital expenses. Uh, some are making specific provisions this particular year to be an offset for COVID-related expenses to, which will be incurred in the, the school year that's about to start the fall. Um, so it's really a question of what's, what's the mind of the council on this as a concept? If you want to go forward with creating a non-lapsing account, uh, pin down the amount of money from the board and it could go into it. And then what are going to be the restrictions that the council would want to put into it? Council action would be required to create the fund and council action would also be required to disperse the monies from the fund. So if the Board of Education wanted to use monies for whatever restriction the, the council puts on it, the board event would have to make that request to the town council. The town council would have to approve it and then the dollars would be made available. Um, so the towns that have done it, it's kind of a mixed bag. I wouldn't say there's one hard fast rule for what every town's doing. Some left it as a capital expense solely, uh, because it was created with one-time money and therefore use it for one-time expenses. I would at least show the taxpayer that they're getting something back from those dollars because uh, capital expenses were not going to be flushed through the budget while the fund existed. If it was used for operating expenses, the more common use is um, for special education expenses. You have a, a special ed student moves into district and there's expensive services associated with it rather than pushing the approved budget that did not assume that child. The non-lapsing account would be the source of funds to, um, meet that individual child's education plan. Uh, COVID is a new wrinkle, uh, which we're seeing some towns put in COVID-specific language. And the Board of Educations have cost estimates for what their COVID expense is going to be based on permutation of how they're going to open schools, whether they're going to open it normally or one hundred percent distance learning or whether it's, uh, a hybrid solution. Uh, so it's, it's really looking for direction out of the accounts in terms of how you want to proceed with this. Uh, one way or the other, whether there's a, an interest to create such an account or, or not. If no count is created, the dollars that the, uh, Board of Education had unexpended would flow through to fund balance and, um, there would have to be further budgetary discussions, uh, for how much, how you would use fund balance going forward into the budget next year rather than having this very specific account just for education expenses.
Thank you, Carl. So at this point, um, based upon what we've just heard, is there a motion for us to approve and to set, to allow the town manager to set up a non-lapsing account?
Hey, I think we need to be a little careful. This is a special meeting, so the agenda item did not have creating the account, it just had discussing it. If it's your desire to create an account, we'll formalize a structure and put it forward meeting on the nineteenth.
Everybody agreeable with that?
Yeah, but just for discussion, I'll just go on record now that, uh, I don't understand why we need it. I mean, we've been operating for many, many years with the, on desert, with the funds not expended by the board of ed, just going back into the undesignated fund and. Uh. I, I personally, I don't think there's a need to change, but that's just my personal opinion.
Nice. Good question. Do you have any idea what the fi- figure is this year, Carl? Is there, uh, a number to go with this under, um, expended funds right now?
Yeah, I think it's, it's approaching a million dollars at this point. COVID-related expenses that may not be covered by some other source of funds, depending on how schools are going to open. Uh, could be about two hundred and thirty thousand in addition to what the board had already has in its, uh, approved budget. So that's, that's something else to put, uh, put into the mix.
Carl, you said this was, this was a recommendation from the auditors, correct?
The audi- the new auditors suggested that we take a look at it. Um, a lot of towns are jumping on board with creating an account like this because of the unique circumstances of the past fiscal year where boards of education under-expended their budget. And either if they didn't create the funds, it was an opportunity to create something to have that, that fallback reserve that the town is in control of. So it's really been brought forward as something for us to think through. Um, you could always do nothing and it would flow through as Dennis, uh, outlined.
All or nothing? Does the entire unexpended amount have to go into that account?
No, that's, that's a local decision to be made. If you wanted to capitalize it with a very specific dollar amount, you could, you could do that too. It's, it's really.
You know, I see what's happening in, in land use, things that we anticipated, um, happening have not happened. The growth that we have seen from year to year has not happened. There are going to be a lot of holes in the budget besides, um, I mean, I'm, I'm feeling as though we could see a lot of holes in the town side of the budget that might be helped with that million dollars as well. I would not want to see it tied up in a fund that, um, I get it. I understand that the town council would have to weigh in and approve any expenditures from that account. But once it's gone, it's gone and we don't get the opportunity to reutilize those funds for something to may come up on the town's part. And the fact that they're saying two hundred and thirty thousand dollars to, it may cost as much as two hundred and thirty thousand dollars for um, COVID-related expenses. Um, if we had the, that million dollars in our budget, we would be in a better position to assist the Board of Education rather than just taking that million dollars and creating a, uh, a, a void, a hole that the town might need help filling as well. I don't know, it's just, I'm, I'm not, my, my bottom line is I am not in favor of doing this. I think once they have that account, it will become proprietary. They will see it as theirs and as an entitlement that they get to keep anything they don't spend from year to year and honestly, I just, I'm not in favor of this personally. That's.
Just so you understand, the statute, the council would make the decision of what comes in and what doesn't go in. The council would decide what go, comes out. So it's something that the town is in control over, not the Board of Education.
I understand, but these are extraordinary times we're in and we don't know what this winter is going to bring. I mean, if, if things come to a total screeching halt, um, I just wouldn't want to have these, this type of constraint on what we can do with the funds in Clinton, so.
I'd like to make a comment. Uh, this is Tim. I agree to a certain extent with Carol and with Dennis, but because of the fact of the COVID situation, I, and, and I have a question for you, Carl. If we were to accept this uh, account, could we disband this account a year or two years from now if we wanted to? Or is this a revolving account that goes on year after year after year?
I'll answer your question with a question. So it's what are you going to do next year, Tim? So if there's no money left over in an individual board of ed budget, then there's nothing new goes in. So then it has a finite life and it tapers down to the point where there's nothing left and, and as a balance or there isn't a usable balance and the fund gets collapsed. So if no new money goes into it, it is what it is and it lasts as long as it lasts. Some towns have a practice of allowing the board to add to put money into it annually so they have, in some cases, some healthy balances in these non-lapsing accounts. It's a matter of financial policy of, do you want to go to fund balance on a regular basis? Or do you want to have other means that you dip into before you dip into fund balance? Um, so it's, it's a, it's a financial policy discussion that, you know, every town has its own decision. Some towns don't have these funds, some towns do. Those that do make it restricted to just capital, others make it for anything, others make it just for operating. It's, it's really something that the, in this case, the town council is in the driver's seat of. And you could go to the point of memorializing it in a memorial with understanding, which would codify the ins and outs of the money and what's there, what's not there and how things work. So it's really up to what's the council's pleasure, what's the financial policy you want to have for the town? And then you go one way or the other.
Okay, anyone else?
I just have a question. Um, Carol referred to the fact that, um, funds are going to start to decline severely and as of the last report from the finance director, things were looking, um, positive. Do we need a update of that? And I would like to formally request that update, um, if that is in fact the case. Um, are we expecting, um, the land use and other, um, funds that typically get posted to the ca- town accounts to be declining severely? Um, my understanding that taxes were coming in, um, as expected. And, um, I would just like a, a additional update, I guess, at this point.
At your next meeting would be the normal time the finance director makes her report. Um, we're only in August, so the fiscal year started on seven one. It's a little early to be predicting that fees are on or off revenue tracking. Uh, property tax collection is probably the most important thing for us as a major source of revenue. Uh, it's also something where we've come down to the end of what is the normal collection season. Uh, and so we are off by a little bit compared to where we've been in the past. Uh, it's not earth-shattering some, uh, but any diminishment from where we've been in the past is something we're watching. Uh, so it's something we keep, keep tabs on and have been watching, uh, weekly to see where our collections are. I think the bigger concern for what the town's revenue stream is going to be is what state grants and aid are going to look like uh, when the general assembly reconvenes in September to make adjustments to the governor's budget. What, if anything, is going to flush through to local governments for a reduction in state aid? We did make certain assumptions going into the budget and, uh, we thought there might be some softening of revenue, uh, and we made those adjustments going into the process. It's really a question of what's that softening is going to look like. States' collections have been strong. Uh, so maybe there isn't going to need to be a, a hit to local aid. I'm not a legislator, want to be one, so it's not something that I have any insight into and we're not going to know affirmatively until September, maybe October at the latest.
Perhaps I can rephrase it that, um, this council maybe needs to start to take a closer look at fees and then also construction in town. And maybe we can have more of a comprehensive report done by the different, um, administrative offices to pride, provide us guidance on where we have been historically and where we are going in the future.
I mean, we're, we're discussing a non-lapsing account for, that's relating to the Board of Education funding, so I, I mean, what you're asking for is something completely different. That's kind of off-target on what we're talking about here. So I understand your concerns, but this is for a non-lapsing account for unexpected Board of Education funds, so.
Well, I'm mentioning because Carol did.
Okay, I understand, but we're going to try to stay focused. Okay.
Thank you.
Let's stay focused on where we're going here. So, I mean, again, uh, any other discussions as far as setting up and creating it is non-lapsing account at this point? So at this point, uh, Carl, then I guess, uh, put it on the table again for the next meeting for further discussion?
Okay.
Uh, move. Move on to number 11, Chairman's Report. Just a couple of things, obviously. Biggest thing is obviously the storm that demolished our town. So I just wanted to take this time to, first of all, publicly thank all the people that were involved in doing what they did for the town. Michael Neff probably hasn't slept in two weeks for all the work that he's done for the town in coordinating with EverSource and all the work that he's done. And unbelievable job for the amount of work that Michael's put for it. So I appreciate that all he's done. In addition, Todd Hijack and the complete, the whole DPW crew, they've been working around the clock. They've been having crews go out late at night, meeting with EverSource to make sure they're doing what they can to get the power back up and running to our town. So it's sort of Todd and DPW, thank you. And the Police Department, Chief DeMayo again. Yeah, for everything that they've done through this problem. In the midst of everything else, it's been great to know that, you know, they're putting forth the effort to try to get everything back to normal as quickly as they can. So on behalf of the town council in the town, we thank you for all the work you've done.
You're here.
You're here. Thank you.
The only other item that I want to discuss now is, at our last meeting, I think Carl had spoken to, we were going through kind of how the town manager form of government functions, what people do, what they don't do, how it's all handled. And one of the things that kind of caught my ear was a goal-setting workshop, which he's done in the past. And as somebody who's had experience being a town manager for 20 years, if he's going to recommend in something that maybe we as a council can come together and set up a goal-setting workshop for all of us to attend, to have a candid conversation about what the council is elected to do, what we would like to work on as a town and the things that we need to do in order to move the town forward. At this point, I would make a formal request to look for a motion that the town council set up a goal-setting workshop at a time to be determined.
I will make that motion.
Seeing that this is a special meeting, can we be adding line items for our motions to the agenda?
Technically no. So this would be something else that you would have to take up at your meeting on the 19th.
Okay. So we'll obviously move that to the table, table to the 19th and then we'll discuss it further there. But I felt that that's very important for us to do as a town moving forward. That is all for me. Move on to the Town Manager's Report. Mary, yell at Carl to tell him to turn off his view.
So you have my report. Prior to the storm, the biggest issue at the time was police accountability bill that went through and subsequently signed by the governor. Giving you some background on that, that was put up by CCM for your own education and understanding. Did receive correspondence from the Stanton House. As you know, we have a ground lease with them. And you have a six-month extension from them for the same $2,500 fee that was approved previously. Obviously, there's an interest in terms of understanding what the town's intentions are with Pearson School and the need for this piece of property. So this will have to go back on a future agenda. I just want to let you know that this is out there. And again, that desire to have some direction and understanding use of the property. Also, as a follow-up to the last meeting, when I mentioned that the company that was hired to do pavement management summary survey had done their work, there was a question about doing it for sidewalks. In the agenda packet, you'll notice that there's a sheet of paper from a company called the Beta Group, which lays out additional costs in order to have sidewalks in town graded. The pavement study inventory where the sidewalks are, but didn't grade them the way the streets are going to get graded. So if there's a desire to grade the sidewalks and to do a transfer of funds for $6,850 at a future meeting in order to make that happen. So I'm not necessarily looking for action, just looking more for some sort of direction that there's genuine interest in, a transfer so that I can correct your agenda for the next meeting.
Carl, my understanding because of the state's involvement with the Complete Streets program that we are to some extent required to address sidewalks in any funding at least 1% of any budget related to sidewalks so that we are covering all users, bicycles, pedestrians, car, public transportation. I don't know if you want to sort of share some of the information about Complete Streets and how that system works. I know that you were involved in it in the other town that you participate in as a town manager.
I didn't do Complete Streets in Northern Lanford because it wasn't a thing. Can send out more information on that. So that you guys have that for your next meeting.
So I think it's chapter 238 of the Highway and Construction Maintenance. It's on the state government website. And it's under General State Statute as well.
Also, my report was notation on a meeting with a water company. Something we were trying to get going before COVID started shimming everyone down for meetings. The intent was to understand what their construction strategy is in the town. Again, understand the water quality as well as discuss the Rocky Ledge project. So many of you know the long history of trying to get Rocky Ledge and what that water project was going to look like. There are issues of how the water company can bring money to the project. They really can't by pure bring something to the table based on speculation. They need to have commitments of people signing up. So the new equestrian facility that's across from Morgan School was new water infrastructure, which theoretically could help with what the Rocky Ledge line would look like. But the equestrian facility signed up and made a firm commitment to purchase water, which allowed the water company to make the line go across to their property. For the line to run down the Rocky Ledge, we need to get scorch of evidence out of impacted residents that they would in fact sign up for water. There is a legislative push that the water company tends to pursue with a pure revision that would allow them to put monies forward for bad wells and concepts of that nature, which basically go towards extending lines based on speculation, which would allow them to bring money into a project that the town would have to make its financial commitment to also. So there's a lot there to be unpacked going forward for what we can and cannot do. Trying to partner with them as an agency working with us.
Carl, can I just ask, have you had any conversation with the Water Pollution Commission updating them with that information? With your conversation with Connecticut Water?
I have not spoken with Matt on the issue.
I'm sorry, what?
I have not spoken with Matt from the commission on that particular issue.
Because we, there is enough, I mean, I know they've surveyed residents in the area before as to their level of participation. So they have the resources to get that done again if it gets to that point. So, okay, thank you.
Also included in my report was that we're going to be, next month will be the start of normal flu season. Preparation for inoculation because of COVID. Now, the district will be, will make reservations for folks to get their flu shots. And since COVID will still be a thing for us to deal with, a desire against from public health standpoint is to make sure people are getting their flu shots early going into the flu season so you can differentiate between normal flu and what COVID does to you. So as more comes out on that front, we'll be pushing that information out for folks to make sure that they're getting their flu shots. And I gave you some slides on a pending road safety study that's going to be coming out of the COG. And that would be the extent of my report.
Thank you, Carl.
Thank you.
The number of homes without power has dropped to 73. So some are reading they've forked up another 17 homes.
Hey, Carl?
Thank you.
Carl?
Yes.
Dennis here. What was that E there, that good news, you know, rare moment of good news? What was that all about?
Don't get rare moments of good news. So Kerma provided a return on member equity. So it's a check of $13,700, which I will report on next meeting. Kerma has had a practice of releasing additional member equity. So it'd be more akin to whether premiums are claims or whether claims experience is such that the claim, the premium is not necessary. So they provided these checks in the past. It's never known each year whether one will come in, but this year we've got $13,000 of our premiums back from Kerma.
Nice. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, all good? Moving on to number 13, Town Council Committee Liaison Reports. Anyone?
Yeah, I'll begin. This, Christine, you want to go?
It's a, go ahead, doesn't matter, neither one.
Okay, Inland Wetlands was postponed last Tuesday night, obviously because of the storm. They will reconvene tomorrow night. And in a public hearing, Planning and Zoning had a public hearing on August 3rd. And AR 20-013, which was the proposed amendment to zoning regulation, section 10.52, contractor businesses and storage yards, that application was withdrawn. So we don't know if they're going to draw something up again in regulations, but for now that has, that has been withdrawn. Tonight, RiverCOG is presenting to the Planning and Zoning Regular Meeting, a regional plan of conservation development. The link is right on their agenda. That's it.
Thank you, Eric. Anyone else?
So the natural hazard mitigation plan is pretty much wrapped up at this point. There was the meeting fairly recently, the public meeting for input. They probably will have one more presentation and then they will ask for a vote to adopt it. So we'll be waiting to hear from the regional plan from the, basically the COG probably will filter that information back to us.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just want to say that my police commission meeting was canceled from last Monday till tonight. So as you can see, I can't be in two places at the same time. So hopefully I'll try to get a synopsis of what went on and give it to you at the next meeting.
Thank you, Dennis. Anyone else? All right, moving on to number 14, need a motion to go into executive session. Personnel pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 1-206A and real estate pursuant to General Statute 1-260D and include Carl and Mary.
Can I ask what the real estate portion of this is? Is that anything I can be on hand for or do I, is it something that's tied in with the other discussion?
You can be, you can be part of the real estate discussion, but you should recuse yourself from the personnel one.
Right, so would it be possible for you to do the real estate portion first?
There's no action for the real estate piece coming out. So I would take that one first and then do personnel, so you can excuse yourself.
Thank you. That'd be great.
Motion?
I'm moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? All right. We're going to wait for Mary to delete everybody else. Okay, we're back from executive session on to item number 15, collective bargaining agreement. At this time, looking for a motion to authorize the town manager to ratify the union contract with the clerical union. Take that motion.
That's a supervisor.
Supervisor?
Yes.
What supervisor should you mean? Your motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. And a motion to adjourn. Make that motion. A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.